All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the February 10th, 2025 meeting of Greenville City Council into order. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. I'd like to call on our fill-in, Councilmember Blackburn, for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to open up with just some words from Buddhism. I think Buddhism always gives us a way to look at the world in a way that allows us to focus on what's important and timeless. "May all be free from sorrow and the causes of sorrow. May all never be separated from the sacred happiness which is sorrowless, and may all live in equanimity without too much attachment or too much aversion, and live believing in the equality of all that lives." Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly?
Here.
Mayor Proton Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Scully?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
All right. Mayor Connelly, have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager?
Have any changes?
Council-- I'm sorry. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I recommend that Council add a closed session motion to re-read at the end of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes five-zero.
All right. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. First speaker is Dr. Yoshi Newman. Dr. Newman, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hello, council, staff, my fellow community members. It's my pleasure tonight to be here to-- as a member of the Environmental Advisory Commission, and you'll be hearing our annual report later in the meeting. I want to share something that you're going to hear and see, and I just want to make a very brief preface to the presentation. You will hear and see the collective urgency that is felt on the commission about the environmental concerns that we've identified for the city of Greenville, which of course are not specific to our community, but for the commission, the importance of sharing with all of you the relevance to the decisions that you'll be making, and a lot of that pertaining to what I'll call wise development, is that we're planning not just for now, but for the near future, not a distant future. So the more I study about flooding and droughts and mitigation strategies, it is urgent. It is-- these are urgent matters that require very sincere attention. So when these issues of zoning and development come before you, I want to encourage you to seek out abundant information about impacts. And just one brief example that I'll give you is development typically has impacts on water quality and quantity. And the water quality is a very serious issue. Everyone wants clean water. So when we look at the way that construction is typically done, not just here, but everywhere, removal of topsoil and how that affects the soil components, nutrient runoff, erosion, and all those things, and how they affect the creeks and waterways, and ultimately our river and the water system that we depend upon. So there's a lot to consider there, and we can only touch upon those things in the Environmental Advisory Commission. But again, there's an urgency and a compelling kind of tone to what we want to communicate with you. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Darryl Norris from Stormwater Engineering. He's our staff liaison, and he's been really helpful in sharing information with us and helping to educate us. So thank you. Thank you for your attention. I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this commission. I found out in the workshop just preceding the council meeting, this commission was formed in 1975, so we are celebrating 50 years. And I will say, at 50 years, these issues are even more urgent and poignant than they were 50 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
We do not have any additional registered speakers.
All right. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seen none. We'll close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda, item number one, amendment of the 2025 schedule of city council meetings. Item number two, approval of public art for Weson Police Station mural. Item number three, resolution declaring therapy Canine Chase a surplus and authorizing his disposition to Kristen Hunter. Item number four, resolution accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements for the preserve at Langston. Item number five, resolution approving encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated, CSXT, for the use and maintenance of three existing subgrade pipeline crossings under Howell Street and the upgrade of an 84-inch corrugated metal pipe CMP to a 10-foot times 10-foot reinforced concrete box culvert, RCBC, as part of the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Improvement Phase Three. Item number six, resolution authorizing the filing of applications to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the fiscal year 2024 FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Grant Program for the Trafalgar Drive Infrastructure and Floodplain Benching Project and Lake Ellsworth Dam Scoping Project. And item number seven, various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to pull one item, although I'd love to hear Michael reread item number five, but I'd like to pull item six, and I guess that would put Darryl on the spot again, but I think this is an important grant, so I'd like to hear a little more about it.
Six?
Item six, yes.
Motion to approve items one through six.
One through five.
Excuse me, one through five and--
And seven.
And seven, but this-- Councilmember Blackburn, pull.
All right. So motions been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Mayor Proton Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
How dare you let him beat you to that?
I mean, I mean, he's on it.
He's in a hurry.
Now that I'm here, I want everybody to know.
I'm in a hurry. I'll now call forward City Engineer Darryl Norris to answer any question you might have on item number six.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
How can I help?
Great introduction.
Well, I know we've talked-- I know in the EAC we've talked about these grants. What I'd like is, I think it's important for us as a council, and especially the community, to know that we-- Greenville is really quite a leader in, I know it's kind of snoozy, stormwater management and flood prevention, so much so that people living in Greenville get a different rate on flood insurance because we are taking so many steps to improve the way we handle floodwaters and stormwater, and this is a part of that. So could you talk, again, not in detail about what these are, but in a big-picture way, what they are and why they are important?
So this is for two grant applications for projects identified in our watershed master plans that we are experiencing issues either dealing with our maintenance of our infrastructure or ongoing flooding. The Trafalgar neighborhood experiences regular ongoing flooding in that neighborhood, not just in a hurricane, but heavy afternoon rain events type thing. It follows up on previous project for the Quarry Road project that is currently under a design build contract that we're working on that we also received a grant for. This follows up and adds to that to help alleviate the flooding in that neighborhood. That includes structural flooding of homes, waters in garages, the whole street going underwater, cul-de-sacs, things like that. And we really hope to make a big difference by improving those culverts and doing some benching to lower those waters. We won't eliminate all flooding, but it should minimize it and lessen the impact to those property owners. The other one with Lake Ellsworth is to improve vital infrastructure within the dam of Lake Ellsworth. This is a scoping grant to develop a future grant application to actually make the repairs. So to look at the emergency action plan, inundation mapping, and things like that, should any damage occur to the Lake Ellsworth Dam that is in our city right of way.
Thank you very much, and I just want to applaud our public, our engineering department and the infrastructure work that's done, and just the forward thinking that takes place within that department because this-- we apply, we find grants and we apply for them, and we've been very successful in getting them, which allows the city to benefit in terms of millions of dollars in infrastructure projects. So my hat's off to you and your colleagues, and with that, I will make a motion to approve this.
Second. All right. Motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Darryl, come on now. Aye. The tie, come on. This is, I think, the second time. See, I wear my pirate purple today.
Even when they lose, they need love.
All right. We're going to new business. Mr. Manager?
Item number eight, boards of commissions presentation. Tonight we'll have a presentation from the Environmental Advisory Commission. I'll now call forward the committee chair, Jeff McKinnon, for the presentation.
How are you doing?
I'm good. I'm so, I'm so pleased to be here once again. So our commission, I'm Jeff McKinnon. I live here in Greenville. I'm the chair of the EAC, which is a great privilege, really. So what we do is to recommend all environmental matters to you all and try to give you some helpful ideas. The members of our group are myself, Yoshi, who you've heard from already, is the assistant chair, Christie Dixon is here too with us, Bob Shaw here tonight, Josh Gardner, Tom Trevathen, Karen Zip. It's quite a wide-ranging group, a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different areas of expertise, and they work very hard on our behalf. We have some great support from Darryl. Is Darryl night, I guess? Wanda Martin, Marion attends a lot of the meetings, bringing Kirby, and he said Kirby gets to some of them as well. We're very grateful for the support that we get. Boy, we've had a good year, which is largely to you all, so if I could, I'd come around and pat all your backs, but I'll forego that. We're so grateful that you created a sustainability coordinator position, which is something we've been working on for a few years, first through grant funding, and then temporary position, and now permanent position. Hopefully that'll be filled very, very soon. So we're really excited about that. The UDO has listened to some of the ideas from our subcommittee on tree policies and regulations, and has at least for the moment adopted them. It's not clear what they can actually do, given the way some of the legislation's coming down from the state, but they have at least the intention of recommending things like planting at least 50% native species, which would be a very, a very positive step. We've assisted with some of the engineering programs, grants, and providing them timely feedback, some of their work. We've also started a couple of new things this year. We're doing literature on fluoride, met with some local experts to hear their input, as there's been some discussion of the issue of water fluoridation this year. We've continued to work on options for adding EV charging stations, which we view as very important. And we've also reviewed some air quality issues, local issues that have come to us from citizen groups. Some of those latter items we'll be continuing to work on. I'm gonna need to provide a little bit of background for some of this year's, this year's goals, so indulge me a little bit. There's a couple of things I have to clarify. The first, I want people to appreciate, because I've heard some discussions in the media from some community leaders that suggest they don't quite appreciate these issues. I've heard, you know, comments about how global warming's just about polar bears and such. That is not the case. It's covering suffering and economic harm right now, right here. Not 10 years from now, and not in some distant place, but right now, right here in eastern North Carolina. Here's a couple of examples. Sea levels have risen already, now what continue, and that's contributing to the loss of coastal holes. It also means the seawater is getting further into coastal lands and killing trees, creating what are often known as ghost forests. NASA has some maps for a few more days at least up online about, about these. The extension folks at NC State will tell you that that sea level rise is also enabling saltwater intrusions that damaged farmland, and affect what can be grown, and how successfully, or if anything, it can be grown at all. Hurricane Elaine, the current analyses suggest that it was more severe than it would have been in the absence of global warming. So these attribution studies are done. The folks try and model the processes that generate various sorts of extreme weather events. And then they model, how would it have been, you know, under conditions 40 years ago, and how is it now under the warmed conditions that we're experiencing? And those analyses, the best we have available, suggests that there was 10% more rainfall owing to warming. If you're like me, there's a pretty good chance that someone you knew lost property, or family, or friends, or suffered in other ways as a result of that event, which was worse than it needed to be. And even if that wasn't the case, you will surely be paying more for your insurance as a result of changes associated with climate change, not a little bit, you know, what, 15% in the next two years? And that's probably gonna get a lot worse, if you can get insurance, because all over the country now, in regions that are particularly vulnerable to these changes, whether through flooding, or coastal events, or fire, we're seeing insurance canceled. So we may be grateful to get it at any cost pretty soon. These effects are not confined to our region, of course. These attribution studies have been conducted all over the world. Here is a summary of 750 events and trends in which, in the vast majority of cases, the analyses suggest that they were worse than they would have been as a result of climate change and warming. There are a few that aren't. The ones associated with cold and snow and ice, some of those are a little bit better. Some of those are worse too, which is surprising, but some of those are a little bit, a little bit better. This is all gonna get a lot worse. So I don't like to be an alarmist about this stuff. I have often been quite optimistic, but this last year was a really, a really shocking year to anyone who pays attention to climate and those data. We know what's causing most of this, so it's human generation of greenhouse gases, mainly from fossil fuels. Two main gases that we think about, carbon dioxide, which we'll often hear described just as carbon, but people are talking about there as carbon dioxide. And then methane. Coal, petroleum, natural gas, burning of all, all of those releases carbon, and extracting all that releases some methane. The thing is that natural gas basically is methane. So when you hear people talk about it, the correct term is really just methane, or methane gas. It's basically what it is. We're burning methane. And so that makes it particularly tricky to deal with, because any of it that escapes is particularly severe. So methane is a much more effective greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. Fortunately, it doesn't last quite as long in the atmosphere. This is what we need to do to prevent the most extreme warming. So on the left there, from 2000 to 2000, you know, 2025, you can see that's the carbon release that's been going on. It's climbing. It's kind of flattened out lately, so we've made a bit of progress. But the extent of change that's required to avoid really severe warming, and I don't mean like 200 years from now, I mean quite soon, to avoid really severe warming, you need, you see the 1.5 line there, it's almost vertical, we'd almost have to just stop using carbon again. That's probably not gonna happen, of course. We're almost at 1.5 degrees Celsius already. But most people who study this stuff think that over 2.0 degrees Celsius, that's where you start to get effects that are really difficult to mitigate. You know, then we're getting into scenarios where there's nonlinearities that we can't fully predict, and, and they get really, really worrisome. So there's a lot of interest in trying to keep us under 2.0, but you can see how fast things have to change to achieve that. So the point is, is that substantial and decisive actions are needed from different levels of government, NGOs, corporations, individuals, and so on. The city of Greenville, you know, is not gonna fix these problems by itself, but we are certainly gonna experience them, and we as individuals are gonna experience them. So I think it's in our interest to make some reasonable efforts and to do our, our share. It's also important to appreciate that burning fossil fuels, you know, was never that great in terms of health anyway. So burning fossil fuels releases other common factors like carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, which causes things like asthma and other respiratory illnesses, cardiovascular illness. All fossil fuels being burned results in that. Coal is generally the worst. Hard to anyone burns coal indoors anymore. At one time, it was pretty common, right? People would burn coal to keep warm, but we don't really do that anymore. We still do remarkably burn methane or natural gas indoors, even though it clearly results in these effects, especially respiratory illness. And we also know that these are serious matters right here in eastern North Carolina. So this is a paper, I think these are ECU, ECU folks, came out in 2018, where they report that five-to-nine-year-olds in the eastern region of the state are the demographic with the most asthma-related emergency department visits in North Carolina. Right here, our kids. That's quite something, eh? Deaths are the same, so it's not like they're all getting better. Overall, asthma mortality rates in NC have decreased, but several rural and impoverished counties in eastern NC with large percentage of African-Americans had the highest asthma death rates in the state. So we are experiencing some of these effects. With that in mind, here's what we're hoping to do for 2025. So the first thing is to work collaboratively with the new sustainability coordinator to familiarize them with EAC priorities and help them get off to a strolling start, some of which will surely involve issues of carbon. We hope to work with, with council to facilitate a broadening of perspectives at GUC so that we can improve the inclusion of environmental issues in decision-making there, and start a shift from fossil fuels to low-carbon sources, and from what we're doing right now, which I find just amazing, advocate, advocating natural gas cooking. We should be warning people about the risks of it, so their kids don't get sick, not telling them that it's fine and to do it. So we need to go from burning natural gas and sick kids to renewable energy and a healthy community, and it's all totally achievable, and a lot of the time, it saves you money. All right. We're gonna continue to work on recommendations regarding reasonably important air pollutants, some that are more specific to our region. EV charging remains a high priority. We're gonna continue working on that task. We've been really pleased with what the UDO has done so far with regard to some of their tree policies. We'll see how all that plays out. Depending on how that works out, we may have some additional suggestions for, for you folks. And then we're gonna keep looking at this issue of water fluoridation, to see if there's anything we can do a little more nuanced than just fluoride, no, no fluoride. There might be some possibilities there we're starting to think about. So I'll conclude much as I did last year. I think a prosperous and healthy future is a greener one, here as elsewhere. And we have done some fantastic things, but we need to keep at it, because it's good for us and we live in a very special place. So thank you. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Well, this slide right here, I know we could talk for hours just on these biodiversity hotspots, and to Dr. McKinnon's point, Greenville is a distinctive biodiversity hotspot, and if I may, I think that's one of the reasons that we have you, as well as other researchers, to locate here, and how precious this area is.
That's, that's true.
And, but overall, I just want to, I cannot say enough good things about this commission. I cannot say enough good things about this commission. Such an engaged group who does their, their research, who comes informed, and who have lively, engaged discussions, and who are so passionate about their work. And so I just would like to commend this group for all of their work. And I know that the meetings can actually be a little long, and sometimes there is a lot of granular level information that is discussed, and everybody does their best to, to keep up and, and stay in there, even when the topics are very complicated. And want to commend our liaison, Darryl, and where's Wanda? I guess Wanda's not here, but thank her for being there. And there's three commission members here, Christie Dixon, Yoshi Newman, Dr. Bob Shaw, Dr. Newman, and Dr. Bob Shaw, and just commend them because they have themselves brought such, just new angles for looking at environmental issues. And I appreciate their work and what they bring to the commission, and appreciate your presentation tonight, and just thank you.
Well, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
When you mentioned about Greenville utilities and moving from fossil fuels to low-carbon options and resources, do you have opportunities yearly to present to GUC like you do to us?
Well, they don't have a public meeting time, so there's no, you know, straightforward meeting. You can't go inside a committee dance, and they're usually in the [inaudible]. But they're actually, it's kind of amazing, because their liaison didn't know, Rick didn't know that, that they don't have a public, you know, [inaudible]. So we've done that, keeping that a little bit.
I wonder if it's an opportunity when we have our joint meeting, Mr. Manager, I wanna say April, perhaps?
We do have one there.
That they might be able to come back and present to both groups, since we'll all be here together?
We will certainly have a public comment period that night.
Awesome. That could be an opportunity. But I think it's important for them to hear the same information.
[inaudible].
Right.
So I'll do that, I have to.
Yeah, yeah, I think I remember in the past that we've had some members of the EAC that showed up. It just has to be germane to both, or--
Yeah, it has to be germane to both parties.
Which it would, which that particular would be, so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of you.
[inaudible].
Thank you.
All right, move on. Item number nine?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, ordinance to amend the manual of fees to update EMS and, EMS and parking fees. I'll call forward our chief financial officer, Jacob Joyner, for a short presentation.
Love it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just have a small adjustments to the manual fees concerning EMS ambulatory fees as well as parking fees. The EMS fees, we are adjusting as the state puts out new rates at the beginning of each year. We adjust ours to be in line to those. So we are changing a number of our EMS rates to stay in accordance with said fees. The changes rate, some of them actually go down. The basic life support non-emergency drops 25. The rest go up anywhere from about $5 to $10 apiece. And then on the parking fees, this is in relation to last month's meeting where the new parking plan for downtown was adopted. This is just amending manual fees to reflect the two-hour free parking, as well as the 75 cent per hour after two hours in the parking deck, and removing all language associated with any pay stations or fee-based parking structures. And we just ask that council approve the changes to the manual fees.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Jacob to stay right there. Item number 10, budget ordinance amendment number seven, amending the 2024-25 city of Greenville budget. Ordinance number 24-038 sanitation fund. Ordinance number 24-038. Public Works Capital Project Fund, ordinance number 17-024. Engineering Capital Projects Fund, ordinance number 20-019. Community Development Capital Projects Fund, ordinance number 17-024. And Special Revenue Grant Fund, ordinance number 11-003. I'll again ask Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner to provide the presentation.
This is a budget ordinance amendment number seven. This will affect the various operating funds, sanitation operating fund, capital project funds, as well as Special Revenue Grant Fund. Item A will be to recognize revenues for the downtown beautification project and revenues from GUC for disparity study. That will increase the general fund by $135,000. Item B will move appropriations from the Planning Development Departmental Budget to their community, to their capital project fund for additional costs associated with the UDO contract. for additional costs associated with the UDO contract. And that will increase the Community Development Capital Project Fund by $12,000. Item C will be to recognize revenues from the Greenville Utility Company for Energy Improvement Fund, and that also increases the Community Development Capital Project Fund by a little over $12,000. Item D will be to reali-, reallocate street improvement funds from Public Works Capital Project Fund to the Engineering Capital Project Fund. This is staying within the same purpose for street improvements. And that will increase the Engineering Capital Project Fund by $307,000. Item F will be appropriating fund balance within the sanitation fund to fund their Assembly Room renovation project. That will increase the sanitation fund $1.4 million. And we have item G, which will be adding two F, two and a half FTEs to the Recreation Parks Department, which will have no budgetary impact. That brings the overall operating budget for the City of Greenville to $196 million. And we ask the council to approve Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Seven.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We'll now move on to the review of the February 13th, 2025 City Council Agenda.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll ask now for that, that council agenda for Thursday, February 13th, to be placed on the screen, and we'll just take a couple of seconds there to let it be viewed.
All right. Since this meeting ran a little bit long, we'll probably skip over the city manager's report, so.
I actually do not have a report tonight.
No! Hey, where's the city manager's shout-out?
I am saving it all for Thursday.
Oh, my gosh.
B is gonna be exciting.
I hope, I hope so. I hope you get that megaphone out.
It's gonna be exciting.
I hope so.
You know it's in his office waiting.
Oh, you know it. You know it. Let's start off tonight with Councilmember Foreman.
No comments.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
Want to, again, thank the EAC for their, its presentation tonight. Would like to mention that it's Black History Month, but I know my colleagues will have more specifics to talk about that, so I'll defer to them. We didn't talk about it. It was on the, the consent agenda, but there's gonna be some awesome new public art at the West Greenville Police Substation. And just can't wait to see that.
I believe we do have a picture of Brock.
Do we have it? Brock, can you put up a picture of that?
It's too much worth it.
Putting him on, putting him on the spot.
Putting him on the spot. Public art is just such a valuable part of our community. And every time I see a mural, and this one was created by youth in our community, and... There it is. Thank you so much. I just, you know, when I see a mural like that, know that it was created by children, and when I, when it just, it just makes me just feel very warm inside. We're such a great community. I know there's a, often, often we get sort of distracted by, by division. And I can't say this enough about our community and this board. We may disagree on things, but we are such a strong community, and we're such a good community. And this is just an opportunity to take a moment and say, here's, here's just, you know, a visual example of that. And so I'm just really glad to see this, see this going up in our community. The last thing I want to say is that January, I was talking with somebody in the hall about January, and how many meetings we had, and very heavy agendas in our planning session. And we did a lot of heavy lifting, and I just want to commend the staff and all our employees for the work that they did during the month of January to prepare information for us and to allow us to have very, very streamlined, effective meetings. And how much I appreciate the work that went into that. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. As my colleague said, it is Black History Month, and I know there have already been different programming. But there are lots of different events that are commemorating the contributions of African-Americans locally and abroad. So lots of opportunities to participate. But those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to echo Councilmember Blackburn's thanks to staff and for all you've done, especially this past month. I know it's been a lot of extra stuff that's come through, and you've spent a lot of extra time. But just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done for us and continue to do for our community. We really, truly appreciate all that you do, especially when there's extra. So thank you so much for, for the great work you do. It is Black History Month, and I just want to acknowledge the importance of diversity and what an honor and a privilege it is to serve on this dais with some Black history right here in this room, with some brilliant, wonderful people who I have the privilege and honor of serving with. We have so much work to do, but the group up here shows us that we've come a long way. And I'm so happy to serve alongside of each of you. Tanya Foreman, Portia Willis, Monica Daniels, Emmanuel McGirt, Ken Graves, Danae Alexander, and the list could go on and on throughout our city staff, throughout the Police and Fire Department. The African-Americans who are serving this community are incredible individuals, and I'm so thankful for each one of them. And for the opportunity that I have to serve alongside you is an honor and a privilege. So thank you so much for all that you do for our community.
Hey, and our illustrious clerk from earlier, Crystal.
That's right.
Yes, she is.
I was looking around to see if she was here.
She's setting up for the...
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Detective Reinstein for being voted on by his peers as Officer of the Year.
Awesome.
At the recent gala, and he got recognized that. So congratulations to Detective Reinstein. What an honor for your peers to nominate you for that. Number two, this Friday, Happy Valentine's Day to everybody up here. Enjoy the one you're with and celebrate the love on that day, whoever your partner is. And also to my beautiful wife, Happy Valentine's Day. I can't wait to be with you on Friday. And we're probably gonna be at the ECU baseball game to celebrate Valentine's Day, because they open up the season on Friday with a three-game series against stores Mason. So if you love some baseball, go watch it, because our team is really good. And I've spoken to the coach recently, so I'm excited about what this year brings. Also, this is Girl Scout Cookie Time. I've already bought so many cookies. I think we ate them all in the first couple of days. So if you get a chance, go support that worthy cause. These young ladies are going out working themselves. If you see them in the mall, wherever you see them, buy some cookies from them. I mean, it serves a worthy cause. Plus, these young ladies are really learning some life lessons as young, as young kids. And so, and particularly, if you really want to go, maybe go towards one, go to Lily Holland. She's in our neighborhood, and Lily came and made a visit to our office and brought some wonderful cookies to us. So Lily, thank you. I hope you're watching, and thank you for coming by and sitting down with our office staff and sharing those cookies. Unfortunately, they didn't last very long, so I probably need to place another order. So congratulations to all those. On a different note, I'm still very concerned about the number of shootings we're having in our city. Now that it seems like they've been in the mall, it's just very concerning. I know the chief is doing a great job to work with all that. And I hope all of us keep that in mind as we move forward with, with what we see down in the future, what we need to do to try and address that. Chief of Fire Department also did a great job on recent fire. I want to congratulate the city staff and the public works on what they did in the recent inclement weather. Because, you know, everybody around here kind of freaks out. If you get a half inch of snow, they tend to drive way too fast and wreck their cars. So I think the city did a, a great job of getting ahead of it and dealing with it, and then cleaning up the mess afterwards, and particularly garbage collection, just like normal with, with, with not even a skip, it'd be. So congratulations to all those people. Thank you for your hard work. And I think that's it. To all my council members, I apologize for not being here earlier. Unfortunately, we was in a special thing trial. It, it took longer than I thought, and we were here till 5:45. So to all of you, I apologize for not being available to have discussions with y'all and talk about where we're going. Mayor, thank you very much. That's all I have to say tonight.
Nothing says I love you more than baseball.
Yep.
Mayor President Daniels?
I'd like to also say Happy Black History Month to everyone. I'd like to thank Willie Joyner and the crew at Third Street School that allowed myself, the mayor and city manager, to come and speak with the youth in my grandson's class. I was Grandma of the Year for a day. So that, that was really nice. And also some of our upcoming events for Black History Month. Our wonderful, wonderful Rexton Parks holds a Black History Month event every Tuesday from 11 to 12:30. Which Rex is that? At South Greenville. Okay.
Thank you.
And the American, African-American music series at Emerge Art Gallery this Friday, Valentine's Day. They are having Afro-Dorations, and that will be at 404 Evans Street. Now, this with the Emerge is actually every month, and not just Black History Month. And Sycamore Hill Missionary Baptist Church will have their annual, their yearly Black History Month celebration at 9 o'clock this Saturday morning. And I hope to see you all there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's tough. I don't know. I might have to take back my comment about love and baseball. Music might, music might be a little bit better. I don't know. I'm just gonna say it. Anyway, I just have a couple of quick things, real quick. My mother-in-law turned 70 last week, which was a milestone birthday to her. So I want to wish my mother-in-law a happy belated birthday. And then today is my mother's birthday. She is out to dinner with my kids and my wife, and I'm here serving the people of Greenville. So happy birthday, Mom. And with that, I need to call on Attorney McGirt for a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.1186, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of individual public officers or employees, or prospective public officers or employees. And to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, including but not limited to the public body considering and giving instructions to an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim or judicial action or administrative procedure.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson?
It was tied.
I had like, I thought it was...
That's the lady's first, Willis.
Councilmember Willis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
I must have, my ear must be off, because I swore I heard you. And then somebody said Matt said it. And then I'll, and then...